I don't like to leave my associates.
Are we, are we ready?
All right, let's call the meeting to order. Please rise and pledge the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with the free, fair, and just.
Thank you very much. Let's call the roll, please.
Commissioner Orthline.
Oh, here.
Vice Mayor Stanley.
Here.
Mayor Morgan.
Here.
Let it also be known that Greg Dunham, our town manager, our town attorney, John Randolph, our chief of police, Richard Jones, and myself are also present and absent with notice, our Commissioner Lyons, Commissioner Smith, and Assistant Town Attorney Edward Nazara, who is taking his bar exam. So everyone say a prayer.
It's, it's actually his board certification. A municipal attorney.
All right. Yes, so we're short staffed, but we shall proceed. We have the minutes from our last meeting on April 14th. Any corrections, additions, comments, or motions?
A motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Renai?
Commissioner Orthline.
Yes. Vice Mayor Stanley.
Yes.
Mayor Morgan.
Yes. Any changes to the agenda, Mr. Dunham?
Yes, sir. Under the town manager's reports, number three, I will make a short comment about Little Club Road. And number four is potential grants for our core area CIP project.
Very good. Our next meeting will be June 9th at 9:00 a.m. For anyone who wishes to attend, we have today Senator Lori Berman, who comes each year to update us on things in Tallahassee. Senator Berman.
Thank you. Good morning, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Commissioners. Great to see you and glad to hear that your attorney is board, is already licensed to practice law in Florida. Nice to see everyone. So we just finished session last Friday, so this report is hot off the presses, one week, one week old. The governor hasn't had his vetoes yet, so come, a couple of things may still be pending, but we passed a budget this year for $117 billion. Very robust budget. Florida has, is doing really well financially, plus we have got, of that money, 40 billion comes from the federal government. So it's nice to have a year where we can, where we've done a lot of really good things. The budget was unanimously passed in both chambers, bipartisan, really good things in the budget. And of that 117 billion, 10 billion is put away in reserves. So we put money away for when things are not as good as they are. We are giving all state employees a 5% increase. We are put away money for Hurricane Ian and Nicole. How much should we put away? Let's see. 350 million. Beach renourishment, 100 million. We've done, raised the amount that we're spending per student. We're up to about 8,500 per child. We're expanding kid care access, which is the insurance program for children. There is going to be a cliff coming up where a lot of people are going to be coming off Medicaid, and so hopefully we will make sure that all those children are still covered with insurance. We're doing more on opioids. We're doing a lot for the environment. We're putting away Everglades restoration was 500 million. Water, the water quality improvements was a billion. Flood and sea level rise, 300 million. We continue to have healthcare as the largest silo that we do. That's about 47 million. And the second largest silo, I mean 47 billion, excuse me, and the second largest silo is education at 30 billion. So really robust, great budget for the citizens of the state of Florida. I like to also give you a report on what we do on preemption, because those are things that we are taking as the state that you, as the local legislators cannot do. I was just talking to the mayor. I'm a strong believer in home rule. I voted against many of these bills. This year was no exception in terms of very, very many preemption bills that we're continuing to do. Probably one of the worst ones is SB 170. It's called local ordinances. It's probably on the governor's desk now, and I would advise you to ask him to veto it. It basically says anytime you pass a local ordinance, with some exceptions, it, a citizen can sue and say it's arbitrary and unreasonable. And while that suit is going on, the ordinance is suspended. It doesn't go into effect. So it basically, you know, you, you could end up with a situation where you're, you're going to have increased legislation and, and your ordinances are not going to be effective. So very concerned about that ordinance. Think you should look into that. We did do a change to the condominium law. If you remember after Surfside, in a special session, we passed the law about inspections and reserves for condominiums. It was passed pretty hastily during a special session, so we went back and tried to do a glitch bill to fix it up. And we do allow municipalities to extend the deadline for the milestone inspections under certain circumstances where you show good cause. The problem is there's just not enough engineers, even in the state, to inspect all these buildings now, because any building that's three stories or more and is 25 years or older, actually I think mostly 30 years, but in your area, you're probably in the 25 because you're close to the water. So any building is going to have to have these milestone inspections, and there's not even enough engineers throughout the state. So there are, we've tried to address that. We'll probably still have to come back on the glitch bill, but that will definitely affect a lot of your buildings in this area. The other thing that will affect you all directly is SB 774, which I don't think the governor has signed that either yet. Right now, in order to be a city council member, you have to file a Form 1, which is a financial disclosure, but under this law, you will have to file a Form 6, which is a much, much comprehensive financial disclosure. I voted against this bill because I'm worried that it will have a chilling effect on people who want to run for office, because you're going to have to file these very comprehensive financial disclosures. So I'm sure that you will hear from your attorneys and your city managers when it's time to have to file these disclosures, but you can also ask the governor to veto this law also, SB 774. I had one really, one bill that was really important to me that I passed this year that I'm really proud of. It was my number one priority, and it was to make our domestic violence laws stronger. And it basically says that if, in a situation where there's a partner who's intimidating and harassing and threatening the other partner, that that will be factored in when they do injunctions in domestic violence as well as child custody. And it was unfortunately a result of a very tragic situation in Broward County, but, so really proud about that. I like to try and find something in my, I'm here with my staff, Evelyn Duplessis, right here, and I'd like to try and find, so she said, we always try and find something like a little light to end the discussion on, and it was a tough session. There were a lot of cultural war issues. We spent a lot of time on, on LGBTQ issues, on immigration, on a lot of different things. So it was pretty tough to find anything lighthearted in this session. The only thing I will say is there was a little discussion about changing the state bird from the mockingbird to the scrub jay, and it did not pass because I think they said that the scrub jay doesn't sing very, in a pretty voice. So, so we still have the mockingbird as our state bird right now. But I'm happy to answer any questions that all of you have, and really happy to represent you. Our office is at Gateway and 95. I think we passed this out. If you didn't get one, it's mostly about the preemption issues, but if you didn't get one and you'd like one, we're happy to give you that, and you can get in touch with us. Oh, we have them right up here on the table. Thank you.
How close was the vote on Bill 170?
Um, believe it or not, it was not very close. It was party line, pretty much, because it was actually a priority of the Senate president. It was her, she wanted it last year. We actually heard the same bill last year, and it didn't go through. In her, the way she framed it to us last year, she said this, she's tired of all these preemption bills, which we all are, and that this would be the mother of all preemptions, and once this bill passes, there's no need for any other preemption bills. That's what she said. I don't believe that's what's going to happen. I think that after this passes, there will be other preemption bills still. I don't know if the governor, I mean, it was her priority. I'm not sure if the governor will veto her priority or not. We'll find out. Yeah.
Okay. Any questions? Yes. Skip.
Can you comment on Senate Bill 250? I understand the Senate president put it, she was from Naples, and she put it through, and it says that anyone, any community which is within 100 miles of either Ian or Nicole is preempted from passing any more restrictive zoning measures until October 1 of 2024. I don't know how much you've delved into that, but it's a real concern. I don't know if we're, Palm Beach, I know, is 100 miles from Hutcheson Island. We probably, we may be as, as well.
I don't know if that, I mean, I know there was something about Hurricane Ian and Nicole about if somebody wants to live and put a, a trailer park in their driveway, a trailer home in their driveway. I know the cities and states can't stop them from doing that if you were, if your house was damaged because of Ian, but I'm not sure that they preempted, is, what, it's 250? I'll have to take a look at it.
The language seems to indicate that they preempted any zone, any change.
Oh, here it is.
Which are more burdensome or restrictive than what was in effect as of September 22. And it just seems like that may be a broad rate reading. Maybe it, it's only to apply to places that were damaged by the hurricane, but.
Yeah, I don't, I don't think that was the intent. I mean, here, I'm reading a little, I have, it's in my little summary here. Extension and expedition of permitting processes and details surrounding inspection and building teams following a natural disaster. So extension and expedition of permitting processes. Counties and municipalities can prohibit a residence from a temporary struck, can't prohibit them from having the temporary structure like the RV or the trailer. That was the big thing about that bill is you couldn't, you know, that somebody can live in a trailer on their property while they're, while it's being fixed. I don't think it was, I don't think it's 100 miles, because I think that sounds too, too broad. I don't think we would.
That's later on, on the bill. On Page 15.
Oh, okay. Really? All right. I'll take a look at it. And, and yeah, because I didn't think it was, that was that onerous, the natural emergencies bill.
Thank you.
Sure. Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, Senator. What, very grateful for your, for your service. Senator Berman's a tireless defender of, of small towns' rights, which is known as home rule, our ability to, to govern ourselves, particularly given the unique circumstances of small towns on the barrier island, and you have always been there for us, so we're very grateful.
You're welcome. Thank you so much. Great to see you all. Have a good day.
Anyone else wish to speak, public comment? If not, let's move on then to reports. Town manager on artificial grass. Turn that over to me.
Turn that over.
All right. Well, we seem to be moving in the direction of approving some limited application of artificial grass, and we thought it might be helpful to have someone with expertise in the area talk about the types of grass that we might consider. Dr. Fries, Dr. Niels Fries, just come up here. Dr. Fries is a PhD in chemical engineering from the prestigious Technical University in Denmark. He's worked for a number of large chemical companies and holds five patents in a plastic production process that accounts for one-third of the world's polyethylene production, which is significant to artificial grass. So I'll turn.
All right. Thank you, Scott. Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
So I'm here this, this morning to talk a little about artificial turf and more specifically about the chemicals used with artificial turf. So artificial turf was first developed by Monsanto, developed and patented by Monsanto in 1965, and the product was originally called Kimgrass, what a name, right? But Monsanto quickly realized that was not a good name, so they renamed it AstroTurf. And Monsanto ran this business for more than 30 years and then sold it to Sports Group, which is a German company and which is the largest business in the world engaged in sport services. Today, there are about 20 companies in the world that manufacture artificial grass, many of them are in the United States, but also in China and Europe. In fact, several of the American producers of artificial turf, they import the blades from either China or Germany, and then they just do the final assembly in the United States. So there are four key components to artificial grass, that the grass blades themselves, the thatch, turf backing, and cushioning. Next. So the grass blades are made from one or three polymers, either polyethylene, which is my favorite product, polypropylene, and nylon. Next. So polyethylene is soft and very pliable compared to nylon and polypropylene, and it's therefore has the most realistic look and feels the most realistic like natural grass. It's extremely resistant to water absorption, so it doesn't absorb urine from pets. And as I said, it's softer than nylon and polypropylene, and therefore it requires smaller amounts, if any, of plasticizers than nylon and polypropylene. Can't see the bottom of this, but it is susceptible to UV degradation from sunlight, and therefore is almost always combined with UV stabilizers. Polypropylene is harder and more rigid plastic than polyethylene, requires greater use of plasticizers. It is also very moisture resistant, and it's also susceptible to UV degradation, and therefore is always, almost always combined with UV stabilizers. Nylon is a little bit different than the other two polymers. It is the most expensive material used for artificial turf, but it's also is highly abrasion resistant, more abrasion resistant than polypropylene and polyethylene, so therefore it lasts longer. It, it is resistant to UV radiation, does not require UV stabilizers, and it, but it does require the use of plasticizers. Next. Okay. The thatch layer is right below the glass, grass blades, and that gives added support to the turf, and it's usually made of polypropylene. Next. The turf backing is made from polyester cord, and the grass blades are woven into this layer using a tough machine. So you now have the three layers, the turf backing, the thatch, and the grass blades together as one piece. Then finally, at the bottom, next, is the cushioning, and that is typically made from either polyester or rubber. If it's made from rubber, sometimes the companies use rubber cramp, which is made from recycled tires. I'll talk more about that in a second. Okay. Cushioning that is made from rubber cramp contains poly, polycyclic aromatic hydrocarbons or PAH and heavy metals. PAH is, many PAHs compounds are carcinogenic, and heavy metals like lead and tin, which are found in rubber tires, are linked to neurotical, neurotic, neurological diseases similar to Alzheimer's and Parkinson's disease. Next. All right. So recently, the European Chemical Agency proposed a ban on the use of artificial turf containing rubber cramp with a transition period of six years. And also in 2022, the city of Boston prohibited the use of artificial turf in city parks. And several more municipalities in states like Massachusetts, Connecticut, and California have begun limiting the use of artificial turfs, either by bans or outright bans or moratoriums. Next. All right. So common additives used in grass blades include polyfluorinated alpro substances or PFAS and phthalates. Both materials are used in manufacturing of household goods, packaging, and electronics. In fact, they're ubiquitous. PAFS is found in the blood of 97% of Americans. So are these compounds safe? We really don't know today, because there are large families of each compound, and individual compounds have not been studied extensively, but research is now going on to get more information about their health, if their health, causing health hazard. And most of this research is now sponsored by the EPA or the Center for Disease Control. So there will be several years more before we really know what, what the health hazard are in these compounds. Next. All right. So artificial turf versus natural grass. Obviously, the artificial turf does not require watering, so that saves billions of gallons of water every year. That's a good thing. And it also does not require the use of herbicides such as Roundup, which is a known carcinogenic. On the other hand, artificial turf does not look as natural as real grass, and does have some risk, risk of toxicity due to the use of plasticizers and rubber cramp. Next. So I contacted eight manufacturers of artificial grass and about if, if they use rubber cramp and what chemicals they use to, use to make the grass. And four, only four of them got back to me. And the good news is that all four of them, or none of the four, use rubber cramp. And one of them in particular is an interesting one that's Megagras. It makes what, what I think is a very safe product. Has no rubber cramp. The blades are made from polyethylene. They don't use plasticizer, and they don't use PAFS. All right. And the next one. So what I recommend is, because rubber cramp is a known health hazard and alternative materials such as polyester is available, I would recommend that the, prohibit the use of artificial turf that uses rubber cramp. And secondly, I would also strongly recommend to use artificial grass that is you, that uses polyethylene, because polyethylene contains the least, if any, amount of plasticizer in PAFS. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Dr. Fries, some questions? Comments? So it's the plasticizer on the grass that is potentially carcinogenic or toxic.
Yeah. And, and, and the plasticizer is added to soften the polymer, and the PAFS is added to duplicate joint extrusion. So if I say, maybe polypropylene requires more plasticizer and more PAFS than polyethylene does.
Which one looks more natural?
No, polyethylene does, because polyethylene is naturally soft and pliable. There are two kinds of polyethylene. There's high density and low density. What's used here is low-density polyethylene, and that's very soft and pliable, and therefore looks more and feels more natural than, than, than grass made from polypropylene and nylon.
Great. Well, thank you very much.
All right.
Appreciate your efforts. You know, we're gathering information to move forward on, on an ordinance.
Was that forever long? Was that, didn't we have that guy that was here?
I couldn't remember the name.
That was it? That was it? Okay. Um, that was the salesman of the year award?
Yes.
Right?
Right.
Remember him? Um, and, but he never returned your calls or sent a sample?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
We did have a sample that was thrown in everybody's driveway, if you remember that, a long time ago.
You had a sample of what?
Of artificial grass. That a company just pitched out like a newspaper in.
In everybody's.
Everybody's driveway.
I see. You know. Well, it's come, I mean, the, the artificial grass has come a long way from, from when Monsanto developed it. It was a very, very toxic material that Monsanto originally developed, and this chemical, or this Megagras product, I think is actually very safe, because it uses low-density polyethylene, and it has no rubber cramp in it, and no PAFS, PFAS, and no plasticizer. At least that's what they're telling me.
Good.
All right.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the effort you put into that. It was very helpful, Niels. Okay, let's move on then to the, I'm sorry. Yes, sir.
Thank you for the.
I need you to come to the microphone and state your name, please.
Sorry, we have to get everything on the, on the record.
James Gammon, resident of Gulfstream. Thank you for that description of the structure, the blades, the thatch, the thing that the grass is, yeah, and the, the layers. Okay. Basically, my question is, when rain lands on this, how permeable is this system? Does, does the, in other words, does it have to be perfectly sloped in order to drain? Or if it's not so permeable, is there going to be ponding, which of course leads standing water, mosquitoes, Zika, all those different problems? My second, sorry.
Yeah. I, I really don't know, but I have, I've seen a lot of artificial grass, and I never see any bonding on it. So I think they must have ways to make sure it rains rapidly from, from rain.
Uh huh. Okay.
That's my, that's my guess.
And my second question is related to that, is, is, does the runoff, rainwater runoff from, pick up these, like the heavy metal chemicals, benzene, arsenic, whatever, and go into this, the storm sewer drains, which eventually go into the intercoastal, at least in Gulfstream?
I believe they will, but in recent months.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, James. Anyone else wish to speak on this topic? All right, thank you. Let's move on then to the next item on the agenda, which is our security camera update. Mr. Dunham?
Thanks, Mayor. I just have two or three very short updates to give to you this point in time. One is this, on our security cameras, our contractor, Flock Safety, conducted a pre-installation site survey this week in the core area. Installation will occur either next week or the week after. Flock will then confirm the cameras are functioning properly. They'll be looking at, to make sure they're receiving adequate sunlight, connecting regularly to the cellular network, and taking high-quality images, et cetera, in addition to others. Then they will grant us access to the camera footage. So we're right there.
Very good.
Getting ready for the installation. I do have a comment to make on Little Club Road. As you know, there's been recent discussion at the commission level about the possibility of three owners of the Little Club Road itself dedicating their ownership of the road over to the town. The staff is suggesting that discussion related to such a conversion be tabled at this point. And perhaps considered as a potential capital improvement proj, project in the future. As you know, the cost of such a project would be substantial, considering the planning, engineering, and construction expenses that would be necessary. And as you also know, beginning this fall, we're looking at 18 months of construction on the core area improvements, beginning again in the fall, either August or September, and going into the calendar year of 2025. So that's 18 to 20 months of construction on our core area improvements. So that would be the staff's recommendation at this, at this time.
We had originally directed staff to look into this matter, and they're now recommending that it be tabled, and I think we're pretty persuasively argued why it should be tabled. So unless you disagree, I think we should.
No, I think we should get that on town in order. I, I, that's fine. You know, we need to get our construction done before we take on more.
Right. And that was our thought. I mean, we've been talking about this for a long time, and it's just, and it's right here, so. And, and, and a minute here, I'll give you an update on where we're at with the engineers on the project.
Okay. All right. Well, I think that's the direction. We, we agree with your recommendation. Grants for the CIP.
Right. And so I'm working with RMPK Funding, a company that identifies and writes grant applications. And they've identified several funding, funding sources, but one in particular that they are looking at is called the Resilient Florida Planning Program, that they think that we would qualify for grant money with respect to the, the road work, the road work and the, and the drainage projects that are included in our overall project of replacing the water mains. So, and I talked to Rebecca Travis, who also agreed that she believes that that part of our program would qualify for some of these grant funds that they've identified. that part of our program would qualify for some of these grant funds that they've identified. So, now, RMPK really can't get, they work on, on a project basis, not by hour, in time and hour, hourly figures. So they really can't give us a cost of doing that yet because we don't have the final estimated cost of the project from Baxter and Woodman, and they need that, and, and also they need the hundred percent drawings and plans from Baxter and Woodman, which they're completing as we speak. They, we've already seen the ninety percent, the staff made recommendations to them. And so basically, the hundred percent simply includes the, the little changes that the staff made to their
Ninety percent, I think, was submitted in, in March or early April, right?
Correct.
When, when will the, the final?
I could do it today.
Any day.
Right. Now, we have already, so following up on that, we're, on the schedule, we are in the permit phase right now. So we've already submitted permit applications to the DOT, to the Army Corps, to South Florida Water Management District. And we'll be submitting an application to, or a permit application to the Palm Beach County Health Department for our new water mains that are going in. They require the Health Department permitting. So, so we're in the permitting phase right now. And I'm trying to remember on the schedule, I think. I think they believe that we'll be done with our permitting about mid-July. And, and be ready to, they're working simultaneous on, on different items on this. So they are preparing for, you know, a, for advertising the, the project now.
They're still planning on mobilizing if everything goes well in August?
Uh, yeah, it's, they're still looking at August. They got, they were about a month behind on the, on the design. And so it could be September, but, but yes, we're looking at a fall start, yes. So
All right, very good.
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Dunham. ARPB meeting, for anyone who wishes to attend, will be May twenty-fifth at eight-thirty AM. We go back to the finance report.
Yes. Yes. This represents fifty-eight percent of our budget. Now, at next, next month's meeting will be setting our September public hearings for the budget. It does look like our regular commission meeting in September is on September the eighth, and I don't believe it, it is being, we could have our first public hearing after that meeting because it doesn't conflict with the county or the school. I'm not sure about the second date yet, but we'll talk about that.
Good, yeah, I think that, that makes sense.
Yeah, and at this point in time, we're basically one hundred percent of this year's Advalorm revenues have already been collected.
Any questions? If not, Chief Jones, police reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I would ask that you accept the report as submitted in your packet. If you have any questions, I'll be more than happy to answer them regarding the report or anything else for the police department.
Any questions? Not accept the report as submitted, thank you very much. All right, let's move on to memorandum of understanding with the FDLE.
Yes, sir. I'm going to hand this one over to the police chief, and he will discuss the MOU that we're talking about here.
Thank you, Town Manager Dunham. So the MOU is a best practice MOU related to any type of in custody death that could potentially take place as a police officer interacts with, you know, residents and citizens abroad. That could be either an in custody death relating to someone who's potentially suffering from a drug overdose situation, but happens to be in our custody, which could be as simple as a traffic stop, or it could be more elaborate to an officer-involved shooting incident that takes place. Although these incidents aren't common and they're not prevalent in our community, we need to have an MOU in place that outlines an agreement with the Florida Department of Law Enforcement on how those incidents would be handled and who would have what portion of responsibility as it relates to that MOU. So I would actually encourage the MOU to be approved by the town. I did bring forward this request once I became the chief and realized that we did not actually have in place any MOU for an incident like this. Hopefully, we never have to use or activate the MOU, but I don't want to have an incident like that potentially happen and then be wondering who's going to be the agency that would be responsible for investigating the actual incident itself. This MOU definitively defines what agency has what responsibility, and also sets out the requirements for what the Gulfstream Police Department does, what the Florida Department of Law Enforcement does, and what any other agency that participates in the incident is responsible for. And it also sets out a specific guideline that allows for transparency, so there's no question about us typically investigating ourselves in an incident like this and then covering up or hiding something. I'd be more than happy to answer any questions.
Questions? No questions. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. Is there a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding, the FDLE?
I'll approve the memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Renee.
Commissioner Orthwyne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Morgan?
Yes. Mr. Dunham, extension of the interlocal cooperation agreement.
Yes, sir. I can give you a short version or a long version.
How about the short one?
Okay. The, the town is currently in an interlocal agreement with the county, which qualifies the county to receive federal community development block grant funds for programs such as homebuyer assistance, housing rehabilitation, demolition rental assistance, and mortgage assistance. That expires in twenty twenty-four, but HUD wanted to amend the current agreement. And so before you today is that amendment to our current agreement, again, which expires in twenty twenty-four. But what the county is asking for is the town to, to approve this one amendment. And, and HUD then is asking for the town to then go ahead and re-qualify for our agreement with them in twenty twenty-four with this agreement here. Is that confusing?
Yeah, the amendment is what?
What is the amendment? It's, it's in your package.
Yes, I'm looking for you to summarize it.
Well, I asked Palm Beach County to summarize it for me, and they, they were not able to do that.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's why I asked, because it looks like they're replacing clause, they're replacing clause eleven with a revised clause eleven. Seems to be one.
Right.
Doesn't seem to be a clause significantly, the early modification, so.
So you might ask yourself, why are we involved in this? Well, one
That was a question.
Yeah, so if you remember two years ago, when I brought this to you, the county was asking the towns and cities to approve this because the more towns and cities that would participate, the more funds that they would be available, that would be available to the county. So thirty-one towns and cities are participating. There's no downsides to it for the town. The upside for the town is that if there is a natural disaster, then the town would become eligible for some of these housing HUD.
All right, well, that's what we wanted to hear, right?
I mean, I, I can understand that.
Yeah, yeah, I got that. Our motion to approve.
Yeah, there you go.
Move to approve this?
The extension to the
Interco, in their local cooperation agreement with the EC.
Second.
Ms. Basil.
Commissioner Orthwyne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Morgan?
Yes, yes. Ordinance twenty-three slash one is next on the agenda. And I believe that this
This is a first reading?
Is a first reading.
And I can talk about it briefly?
Yes, please.
Okay, so if you remember, at the last meeting, we, we came to the commission and, and discussed with you the fact that we were getting people that were complaining. They were getting, weren't, were not getting notices to items that were coming before the ARPB or the Town Commission. And in fact, our ordinance from even level two and level three approvals really only required twenty-five feet of notice requirements. And so we looked at some other towns and cities and including Ocean Ridge and, and also Manalapan. I think Manalapan actually has a six-hundred-foot notice requirement. We discussed this at the last meeting. The commission wanted us to come back with an ordinance that for level two, level threes, for variances and special exceptions, all of them to be at six-hundred-foot notices. And so that's what this ordinance does. It amends our current ordinance.
Okay, comments, questions?
That's just why we decided to draw those levels to six-hundred feet, so we went over it with, agree with that.
Yeah, so the level two, three, and special exceptions were twenty-five feet, variances were three hundred, and our decision was to change all of those to six-hundred.
So the radius map will include a significant proportion of people. Either it's a class of Selay application or a core application, so everybody will know.
Well, we, we just had a notice that we had to send out from work that the golf club is wanting to do. And how many notices were there?
Hundred and ten.
But that, that's per our current code, because there's a variance involved. And so it, it stretched it to three hundred feet, but, but it's the golf course, so their property.
Every edge of
Yeah, yeah, of course, yeah. So
Okay.
Right.
All right, Ms. Basil, we have our first reading.
Ordinance number twenty-three slash one, an ordinance of the Town Commission of the Town of Gulfstream, Palm Beach County, Florida, amending the Town Code of Ordinances at Chapter sixty-six, zoning. Article five, site plans, Division two, architectural site plan review, levels one, two, and three. Section sixty-six, one forty-five, procedures for submitting and processing applications. Division three, variances, section sixty-six, one fifty-five, procedures for submitting and processing applications. And Division four, special exceptions, section sixty-six, one sixty-five, procedures for submitting and processing applications to increase the required notice for the development applications seeking level two and three approval, variance approval, and special exception approval, providing for separability, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, providing for codification, providing an effective date on this first reading, the twelfth day of May twenty twenty-three.
Thank you very much. Ordinance twenty-three slash one has been brought to us for first reading. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move to approve ordinance number twenty-three dash one.
Second.
Ms. Basil.
Commissioner Orthwyne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
Mr. Ray, on, on our county agreement, I really needed for you to, to make a motion to approve it, and I've got it written out here for you.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, we didn't do that. We're looking for a motion to approve the Amendment zero-zero-two to the current interlocal cooperation agreement with Palm Beach County's urban county program and to continue participation in the urban county program from October one, twenty twenty-four to September thirty, twenty twenty-seven. Is there a motion to approve?
Sure, a motion to approve the extension of the interlocal cooperation agreement as presented by the mayor.
Second.
Ms. Basil.
Commissioner Orthwyne?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Stanley?
Yes.
Mayor Morgan?
Yes.
That's almost it for today. I want to welcome Skip Randolph. It's really a pleasure to have you here.
It's a pleasure to be here.
It's great, great to see you, and really, really, that makes my day. After the meeting today, we have a meet and greet with our new chief. For anyone who wishes to, to stay, we've got some coffee and pastries. With that being said, thank you all for coming. Meeting's adjourned.
Do you have to sign anything? Now, first reading on the ordinance.
Yeah, I don't know.
It's the second.
Renee, we don't have anything to sign.
I'd like to get a letter to the governor on that.
I actually think this new six-hundred feet is a good thing.